Can everyone have a seat, please? Move things along. I'm going to call the meeting to order. We have a quorum. How about the sound waves, everybody? Weren't they great? And before we get in, they're going to sing the National Anthem for us as well. So if you could just stand for that. Thank you so much. The sound waves from Manchester Essex are awesome. If you can stay standing, now we're just going to do the pledge allegiance while you're up. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. And while you're standing, I'd just like to recognize a few that have passed from town. We've got Genevieve, Erin, which I think I already did previous, but that's okay. We had James Witham, Bonnie Perrigo, and Cal Grimes just recently passed away. A moment of silence for those folks, please. Thank you. Now you may be seated. So in case if we need tellers tonight, I'm going to just give you the list of tellers. We have Liz Nichols, Ann Buckley, Don Burnham, Annie Cameron, Gordon Martin, and Karen Gurch, in case we need them. If you are not a voter and did not, a registered voter, or a resident of town and don't have a card, I think we're seated over here. So if you do not have a card, you need to be over there. I've verified that the warrant has been posted in all the required places. So it's all been posted correctly. I'm sorry. Instead of Karen, we have Kathy McKinnon. Thank you. So the warrant's been posted in all three locations that is required to be. I will take a motion to waive the reading of the warrant. Is there a second? All those in favor? Any opposed? Passes. Okay. So Finance Committee, before we start, we always ask the Finance Committee if they support all the financial articles that'll be presented to us.
I don't know. There we go. Perfect. We got it. The Finance Committee met this evening and reviewed all monetary articles before you and unanimously approved each one.
Thank you. The other item is, there's a few people that are down here that are not residents or voting. We have Greg Corbo, our Town Council. And I believe we have a few members from Manchester Essex School Committee that are from Manchester. So they're out here as well. Appreciate you coming. So without further ado, we'll start with Article One.
Good evening. I, Ruth Arprey, move that the town authorize the Board of Selectmen to appoint a surveyor of bark and lumber.
Is there a second? No discussion on that? All those in favor, say aye. Raise your hand. Raise your card, sorry. Any opposed? The motion passes. Article Two. Maybe it's get a little closer, maybe?
I, Peter D. Fippen, move that the town receive the reports of town officials, boards, and committees contained in the annual town report.
Is there a second? Any discussion? All those in favor of Article Two, raise your card. Any opposed? The motion passes. Article Three. A little closer. I think you have to get a little closer.
I...
That's close enough.
Too close. I, Alvin Guharro, vote to approve the wage and salary scale for fiscal year 2025 in accordance with the recommendation of the Personnel Board Report.
Is there a second?
Article Four. I, Alvin Guharro...
No. Any discussion on Article Three? Okay. All those in favor of Article Three, raise your card, please. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article Four.
Article Four. I, Alvin Guharro, move that the town fix the salary compensation of each of the elected officers of the town as required by the Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 41, Section 108, as amended for fiscal year 2025 in accordance with the recommendation of the Personnel Board Report.
Is there a second? Discussion? All those in favor of Article Four, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes. Article Five.
I, Ruth Arprey, move that the town vote to transfer from the town's septic betterment fund the sum of $38,968 for the purpose of making necessary payments to the Massachusetts Clean Water Trust during fiscal year 2025 in accordance with the terms of repayment for community septic management program loan funds.
Is there a second? Discussion? All those in favor of Article Five, raise your card. Opposed? The motion passes. Article Six.
I, Jody Harris, move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $9,351,174 as follows. A. Raise tax, raised by taxation, the sum of $2,121,656 for debt payment repayment, principal and interest. B. Transfer from the cemetery sale of lots fund the sum of $10,000 to the cemetery budget. C. From the cemetery lot care fund the sum of $8,250 to the cemetery budget. D. Transfer from the cemetery perpetual care fund the sum of $756 to the cemetery budget. E. Transfer from the town technology fund the sum of $11,121 to the town IT budget. F. Transfer from the ambulance fund the sum of $50,000 to the ambulance budget. And G. To raise by taxation the sum of $7,149,391 to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the town according to the remaining budget items as indicated in the Finance Committee report and to authorize the Finance Committee to permit budget line item transfers within a department from salary lines to salary lines and from expense lines to expense lines.
Is there a second? Discussion? Yes, Ed. And when you come up to talk to an article, please give your name and...
Oh, I'm sorry. Edward Neal, 15 Western Ave. I just have a question. On line 1V, or page 1V, I guess, page four, where it says sewer debt reserved, two of two. It says that there's $1.749 million in that account, in that fund, and the balance after the town meeting will be the same. This is the money that is accrued from the excess money in the betterment charges over the years? How? What I'm after is, I know we have to pay the state for the repayment of the sewer. Is this an excess balance? Or would we expect that to be diminished during this fiscal year to pay off the yearly sewer charge?
Brendan, can you address that, Brendan?
The sewer debt reserve is money that accrued since the town received funding at 0% or actually less than 0% for some of the loans we got. And betterment payers are paying it back at 2%. So there's a delta, and that money goes into a separate fund. That money can only be used on capital items. And we were allowed to actually tap that in the past before we paid off the entire debt, which is coming soon, actually. The sewer project is almost paid off. But the Department of Revenue at the State of Massachusetts determined that the money needs to stay in there until the debt is retired. Does that speak to your question?
Thank you, Brendan. Any more further discussion? All those in favor of Article Six, raise your card. Those opposed? The motion passes. Before we do Article Seven, I forgot to introduce our new clerk. This is Ann Dunn. Sorry. Sorry, I didn't do this earlier. But Ann is our new clerk. She started.
I, Nick Ellis, move that Article Seven be indefinitely postponed.
Is there a second? All those in favor of postponing Article Seven, raise your card. Opposed? It's postponed.
Okay. I, Nick Ellis, move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $1,736,539 for the fiscal year 2025. Sewer Enterprise Fund budget as follows. A. Debt repayment, principal and interest, the sum of $319,690 from sewer betterments. And the sum of $328,911 to be raised by taxation. And B. Funds to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the sewer department. from the departmental receipts, all as indicated in the Finance Committee report. And to authorize the Finance Committee to permit budget line item transfers within the sewer department from salary lines to salary lines and from expense lines to expense lines.
Do you have a second? Discussion?
We do this year by year to move money around to allow us to fund operations within the sewer department.
Any further discussion?
Carl Shawell, Belcher Street. I'm just curious why residents that are not on the sewer system would be taxed for a sewer system that they've never participated in.
Brendan, do you want to...
I'll let Brendan answer this question.
Brendan?
So when the sewer system was first installed, the town considered that a portion of the sewer system serves municipal functions, municipal buildings, and as well as some sewer service capacity for the future. And so it was decided that the people who pay betterments, those are the people who are connected or are eligible to connect to the sewer, were going to pay 72% of the total. And general taxation, whether you're eligible to be connected or not, was to pay the other 28%. And that was looked at with respect to how much flow the town had at the time and wanted to have for future use.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article Eight, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes. Article Nine. Nick, I think, are you nine?
This is an easy one. I, Nick Ellis, move that Article Nine be indefinitely postponed.
Second? All those in favor of postponing? Any opposed? Motion passes.
This one is not as easy. I, Nick Ellis, move that the town vote to appropriate the sum of $870,985 for the fiscal year 2025 sewer enterprise fund budget as fol- water enterprise fund budget as follows. Debt repayment, principal and interest, the sum of $21,708 from departmental receipts and raised by taxation the sum of $5,388. And B. Funds to be allocated between the salaries and expenses of the water department. from departmental receipts, all as indicated in the Finance Committee report. And to authorize Finance Committee to prevent budget line item transfers within the water department from salary lines to salary lines and from expense lines to expense lines.
Second? Discussion?
Similar to the sewer budget, we're moving money around so we continue operation of the water department.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article Ten, raise your card, please. Opposed? Motion passes. Article Eleven.
I, Ruth Arprey, move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $345,545 to pay the town chair of the operating and capital costs for the Essex North Shore Agricultural and Technical School District for the fiscal year commencing July 1st, 2024.
Is there a second? Discussion? All those in favor of Article Eleven, please raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article Twelve.
I, Teresa Whitman, move that the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $9,889,756 to fund the town's assessment from the Manchester Essex Regional School District. Said sum to be calculated solely in accordance with the agreement between the towns of Essex and Manchester by the Sea, Massachusetts, with respect to the formation of a regional school district, as most recently amended by invoking and approving the provision found in paragraph four of Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 71, Section 16B, allowing district members to reallocate the sum of their required local contributions to the district in accordance with the regional agreement for the fiscal year beginning July 1st, 2024.
Is there a second? Discussion?
May I?
Yes.
Thank you. I have some comments. Thank you for your consideration of the Manchester Essex Fiscal Year 25 budget tonight. The budget we're bringing forth represents growth of 2.99% from the budget ultimately approved last year. It carries forward the same scope of programs and offerings as this year's budget supports. We call this Level Services, plus the addition of about $64,000 for two teaching assistants. This budget is responsible, very reasonable in the current educational landscape, and as you heard, carries the support of the Finance Committee. But just a year ago, I stood here with a similar budget in terms of spending growth, Level Services, no extra TAs, but the conversation was very different. We were facing an override which passed here at town meeting but ultimately failed at the ballot. A voter might understandably ask, what gives? What's different this year? I could tell you all the things that our partner towns and districts have done together and independently over the past year, but truthfully, the biggest difference is the very thing that was driving up the ask last year. This budget, once again, includes the structured use of reserve money and an offset from our OPEB contribution. You'll recall that last year, after multi-year collaboration between town partners and the district, we chose to present a budget that did not include the use of district reserves as revenue to offset the cost to towns as had been done in recent years. However, that bump, coupled with the increased burden of shifting apportionment, was too big and asked for Essex taxpayers to support at the ballot. Coming into this budget season, the school committee gave Superintendent Bowden the charge to bring forth a Level Services budget, again meaning the same scope of program, in light of considerable input from residents and leaders in both towns who wanted no reductions to the educational program and some advocating for expanded programming and services. So Pam, and then Director of Finance and Operations, Avi Urbas, took a close look at all the inputs and recommended a budget that did include what they felt confident is a responsible use of reserve dollars and, again, that OPEB offset that still allows us to remain ahead of the curve on this important liability. From that starting point, we as a committee also wanted to know what the principals felt was really needed in their schools. We know that there are a few key things that our residents really want, but we were focused on what students really need. To learn that, we turned to the professionals we hired to tell us. The principal shared their needs and with a favorable break on healthcare rates, she was able to recommend a budget that carried forth that Level Services and incorporate most of the needs identified by the principals at 2.77% growth. This is wonderful. I'm not a big fan of comparing growth rates across districts because each one has a story behind it, but I can confidently say that in this, we are an outlier. The quality of an MRSD education remains strong, and we are getting it at a terrific value through smart use of reserve dollars and through the wisdom of a 10-year strategic plan that relies on reinvestment through natural reductions rather than new asks of taxpayers. But you might be saying, this budget isn't 2.77%, it's 2.99. And that's correct. So that's where it comes to the role of school committee in balancing competing interests across our entire district. It's what we can do and what we should do. The remaining items not included in that recommended budget were two teaching assistants. One to be shared across both elementary schools in our district and one at the middle high school, both for the libraries. Aside from the value of having staff dedicated to help with library programming, there is a very real reduction in the number of adult bodies in our schools with the combination of our specialist teachers shared across both elementary schools. The majority of the committee felt that the administration should not have to nip and tuck to accommodate this, and the majority voted in support of that budget. So what's next? Same old, same old? Yes and no? We will need to continue exploring all avenues to bring forth reasonable, responsible, and importantly, predictable budgets in an unpredictable time. And this may continue to include a structured use of reserves, which we now know is too much to pull out of the budget in a time of skewed apportionment. One big help on this will be our new set of eyes that we have in Michelle Cresta, the new Director of Finance and Operations who herself serves on a Finance Committee in her town. I will tell you a couple of things we won't be doing. We will not be managing the effects of a massive spending cliff brought on by the use of COVID relief funds called Essar Funding. You've probably heard about it in the news because our budgets didn't rely on them. Those funds were used responsibly for expenses specific to the pandemic, not to increase programming. So I'm grateful we won't be doing that. We will not be engaged in contentious and publicized contract battles, as you may have noticed other districts are, because our teacher contract wrapped up last year, and we, for the first time ever, have an agreement in place for a paraprofessional or teacher assistant contract. This is wonderful news. You didn't hear about it on TV? Probably not because we had no contention and really collaborative process in a transparent process as well. As silent observers, we're welcome to come from town leadership, engage in the... excuse me, observe the negotiation sessions and engage in the caucuses. So big thanks go out to our negotiation teams on both sides of the table for that. So in light of this, we ask for your vote in favor of the following. Responsible and manageable budget growth in a time of wild cost increases. A structured use of the district's reserve dollars, which may take place over more than one year, made much easier by the towns, both towns, choices to fund the turf field capital project, which came in under budget by almost $200,000. And our recognition that while our town has real challenges, Essex doesn't just support education, it appreciates good value. Despite being clearly on the side of the Red Sox, I have heard our Yankee sensibilities mentioned too many times to count. Nobody loves a good deal like our residents, and this is one. So thank you for your time, your engagement, your support, and I hope your vote.
Further discussion?
Hi. My name is Antonella Muniz. I live at 20 Harlow Street. I have a question and probably just a quick comment. If the school committee is a committee of seven people and Mass General Laws requires a two-thirds vote from the school committee to pass the budget, how is it that this budget has been put forward with only four out of seven votes in favor of it? Would...
You can respond?
Could we invite... May I invite Superintendent Bowden to respond to that?
Absolutely.
Is there...
Respectfully, I don't recall the numbers off the top of my head, but I'm happy to go back and check.
So I don't think we have an answer to that question. I don't have an answer to that question, so...
There's a video.
I'm sorry?
There's a video of the meeting.
No, I know the vote was four to three. So Pam is saying... So she said that we did not realize the vote was in question and would need to do some due diligence, but our district council is not here tonight.
Okay. So that does nothing for the... So it's still a legitimate budget, then?
We have no reason not to believe this to be the case?
Okay. Because I think a two-thirds in a seven-member committee would be five. So technically, it didn't pass, but we're just going to skip over it?
Okay.
So what's the actual question? Is this was a...
How are we voting on a budget that only got passed by a majority and not a two-thirds? When Mass General Law states it needs to be two-thirds?
I don't know that that's something that we've had to deal with before, and clearly, we didn't recognize it as in jeopardy. we didn't recognize it as in jeopardy. I can speak that we did have one member who was voting against this budget because he was in favor of a higher budget than what we put forth. We had one dissenting vote in favor of the lowest budget put forth at 2.5%, and we had one dissenting vote in favor of a 2.77% budget without those two TAs.
Yes, correct.
So the question of whether or not there was a proper vote at the school committee level, something will they have to be determined, but as far as the question being in front of the Essex Town Meeting, it's appropriately so, and it is fine for the town to vote on it. At some later time, if there was something that was determined not to be correct, there may need to be additional action, but I don't have the answer to that. But it is appropriate for the town meeting to vote on this article.
Okay, thank you. I just have a quick, I guess it's kind of a question. I know you talked about getting the $64,000 instead of the 2.7 budget, you voted for the 2.9, but as I recall, the superintendent was kind of cautioning the school committee that this was going to set us up for a bigger funding cliff for next year if you voted for the 2.9 versus the 2.7, and I'm just trying to understand the rationale for that, because we had a mess the last, as you know, it's been bumpy, so I'm just wondering why y'all voted to vote for the higher budget even though it was going to cause a higher funding cliff?
Tess?
Sorry. I'll let Superintendent Bowden respond to the question of what she intended. I do not recall her cautioning us about a future funding cliff. My understanding from that meeting was that she felt responsible, and please stop me if I'm mischaracterizing, she felt responsible to bring forward the budget that she originally was charged with bringing forward, and our additions to that were, again, based on what we should do, based on the needs of students right now as identified by principals. We felt that it was a very low barrier to ask for a total of 64,000, which is about 21,000 to this town, to actually not make them go nipping and tucking for it. We felt confident, the majority of the committee felt confident in that. Would you like?
I would say that I accurately characterized my position. I did say I would bring forward a level services budget, however, I also do endorse all of the principal asks, and was very grateful to the committee for going up a little bit in the budget and giving us the money for the TAs right away this year, so it's been a big help. Thank you.
Any further discussion?
Hi, Betsy McKean, 35 Lufkin Point Road. I just wanted to say that as an Essex resident who is interested in the schools, I went to a lot of school committees this cycle and in past cycles, and I just want to thank the school committee because I feel like they have done an outstanding job of being transparent and forthcoming and honest, and no one's perfect, and certainly if there's a question of the vote, it should be looked into, fine, but I implicitly trust both the Manchester and the Essex members of this committee. I am delighted to be here tonight to vote in favor of it for our town, for its future, and yes, thanks. Thanks, guys.
Carl Schautwell, 29 Belcher Street. I just have a general question. I don't understand why the budget for the Essex Elementary School is over $1 million less than the Manchester Elementary School. I thought there was supposed to be some equity in this arrangement.
To this, through the moderator?
Sure.
Thank you.
Hi, that's a wonderful question. Thank you. The very simple answer to it is it's based on student population, not just the head count, but also the programming that exists within the schools. Essex is a K5 school with two classrooms per grade level. Memorial's also a K5, but it also includes our pre-K, which is another 40 students, and several of our large district-wide special education programs, which carry a higher staffing to student ratio. So while the per pupil expenditure is the same per head, there are more heads and more programs with more staffing at Memorial School.
Further discussion right here?
45 Forrestav. I feel like I've got deja vu, because I got up and did this not that long ago. I feel like Essex has fallen victim to the apportionment formula, and it shouldn't be the case that the kids have to suffer for that. Our portion is bigger now, and that's what it is. I'm sure you all saw that we were in the top 20, you know, school districts in the state of Massachusetts. That's what makes Essex a great place to live, that's what makes your property values high. Wanting to nickel and dime the school system, I just think is a zero-sum game. No one benefits. This is the future of the town. Many of these kids will come back and live here and raise families here, so I'm staunchly in favor of supporting the school. I firmly believe that our school committee, this is a thankless task, and I think they have the best interests of this town at heart, and we should trust them in their judgment.
All those in favor of Article 12, raise your card. Those opposed? Motion passes. Article 13.
I, Alvin Guajaro, move the town vote to raise and appropriate the sum of $336,052 to fund the approved Article 13 as written in the annual town meeting warrant.
Is there a second? Discussion?
This is for the feasibility, and one of the reasons that I'm reading it is having been on the school committee for many years and also being on the end part of the high school building committee and the memorial building committee. I believe that there's a paper up at the front to explain a lot of what's going on with the feasibility. One of the things that the feasibility does is the MSBA requires that we do a feasibility, and, you know, we've been going through this for years. It's now, you know, the time that Essex is looking at this building, and the building committee, I believe, is already formed, and so, you know, I want to just say, you know, this is here, and if anybody from the school committee would like to get up and discuss, feel free.
Further discussion? Yes, over here?
Peter Crocker, 6 Lufkin Street.
Can you say the names? So she needs to record the names so we could...
Peter Crocker, 6 Lufkin Street.
Thank you.
I'm just looking at the handout here, and I'm looking at a number of $1.5 million for estimated cost. I'm wondering why we're raising 300-some thousand dollars. Am I missing something?
Go ahead, sure, yeah.
I can answer that, and then through the moderator, give my comment as well. Okay. The $1.5 million is a high watermark. The current going rate for this is 1.2 to 1.5 million. This is being split three ways. The district is putting in 500,000, and the remaining million is being split between the two partner towns according to the capital apportionment formula, so that's what brings our total to that number. Manchester taxpayers are on the hook for the additional 660,000-ish.
Follow-up question, is it really cost that much to do a feasibility study? $1.5 million, that seems for a $9 million project, is that?
Yes. I could answer it, but I think I'd like to invite Superintendent Bowden, if that's okay.
Yes, we had this question at the Manchester Town Meeting as well. Shockingly, it is the going rate. I think one thing that is misleading is we frequently use the term feasibility study, and it brings to mind something like the Habib Study, which is a document about options. We're really funding the feasibility phase, which is up to 24 months, and includes the hiring of an owner's project manager, which will be the first charge of the school building committee, as well as an architectural firm, who will then conduct an analysis of potential sites, configurations, and go through a series of iterations and public meetings around what the potential schematic design could be that's finally brought to voters for consideration. So you're really funding not just a study, but a full team to conduct the study and bring you to a decision point as to whether or not you're going to go forward with a full building project. So a lot of the money goes into the contracts for the professionals.
Okay, thank you.
Further discussion right here?
Teresa Whitman, 8 Lufkin Street, also chairperson of the Manchester Essex Regional School Committee. So thank you, Selectman Engaharo. So first, I'd just like to point out how beloved this building is. So many of us in this room attended school in this building. My kids both attended kindergarten in the same room that I did, one of whom did so with the great-great-granddaughter of my or our kindergarten teacher, the also beloved Mrs. Perrigo, and I'd like to public knowledge the good she did for Essex students across multiple generations. I'm happy to share that, I'm really happy now to share that the school committee voted unanimously in support of the feasibility study, and if you've paid attention, you know we don't often vote unanimously. We have seated a school building committee to undertake the work with qualified and engaged community members bringing their expertise and are moving forward with the understanding that the district does have skin in this game as well, to the tune of $500,000. So it is a big ask, but at this point, there is no sense playing chicken with this building. The facilities assessment report done by Habib and Associates, or the Habib Report, as we say, showed that we were starting to get very close to some big-ticket items that are not likely to last that long, and some small and medium ones as well. The renovation or replacement of EES is the last element of the long-term plan to replace our three school buildings across the district, and it often takes multiple attempts to be accepted into the MSBA program. So we submitted a statement of intent a year ago, knowing that it might take a few years to get in. The fact that this school was invited in so quickly speaks to the need. It was done on our first try, and it's not limited to what you can see, though that is enough. We have some real issues of accessibility that also contributed to the urgency, but on top of that, it's important to note that MRSD has proven itself with our two-member towns to be good partners with MSBA on two previous projects. Now Essex showed up for the first two, and we supported the Manchester Essex Regional High School, Middle High School, and the Memorial Elementary School projects. Manchester has reciprocated by supporting this feasibility study at their town meeting vote. They still have a ballot vote on May 21st for their contribution toward this. So tonight's vote is a signal to MSBA, to our partners in the district, and to each other, that we know the importance of a school building as a community asset, and that we're ready as a community to move forward. We all love this building, and it owes us nothing. It's been well-maintained and has served us for decades, but it has fulfilled the measure of its creation, and it is time for lots of reasons. So we ask for your vote in support of this article as a committee. Look forward to having this meeting in a revitalized facility around 2030. Thank you.
Further discussion?
Edward Neal again, 15 Western. I didn't go through this school, I've only been here 52 years, but my younger siblings did, and my three children went through this building. And I won't say that it was trouble-free going through here, but it was never about the building. The building has been a good home for us. It's served us well. This addition was put on with the kindergarten wings after the building was originally built, and now the population, the student population is less by almost a half of what it was when my siblings went through here. There was a study done by a group called Habib, and anybody else read the Habib Study? The Habib Study says that there's nothing wrong with the bones of this building, and if you look around, the walls are eight-inch concrete block with brick veneer. This deck is steel reinforced, reinforced truss with no wear, no corrosion issues. The deck on the rest of the school is six-inch thick, pre-stressed concrete slabs, six-inch thick, concrete, steel reinforced. We put a new roof on it, a 95 rubber roof, which is easily repaired. The Habib Report called for about $6 or $7 million worth of upgrades, and the good part of what, one of the items that they mentioned, was that the things that the building needs, like all-new windows, a new boiler, some new wiring, new plumbing, none of that triggers the requirement that you bring every system and everything in the building up to code. So while we're in this mad rush to go get half the money from the state, which is legitimate desire, we might want to consider that just between Essex and Manchester, we could renovate this building by not tearing it down, not building another building someplace else, and not even worry about that, and we wouldn't be required to put in this all-electric monstrosity that we will be, which will undoubtedly be less dependable than the systems that we've relied on all these years. So I'm going to vote in favor of this tonight, but reluctantly, and I hope that the folks that are looking at this recognize the value of this structure. It's not something that we should just walk away from, and if someone has the idea that, oh, well, we'll just build a new school someplace else, and then we'll turn this into something like affordable housing, this building is configured as a school. Why would you go and build something else and then convert this when it's already in the configuration that you need? So the people in Manchester will vote for whatever we want. I know that, because I have great respect for them, I served on the school committee with many of them, and they're not going to sit in that new building over there and tell us that we can't have it. But we are not in the financial position that the town of Manchester is, and that reality should be reflected in what our desires and needs are for our elementary school building. Thank you.
Tess? Thank you. In response, I just want to point out, I appreciate your outlook, and there is a lot to recommend this building. I just would point out that part of this process, we are required to consider all options, including replacement or renovation of the existing building, and so that is part of the process and certainly won't be ignored. As far as additional uses and that sort of thing, we have inputs on the school building committee from a variety of people, very skilled and experienced, and as a reminder, those are open meetings, and people are invited to attend them as well, so thank you.
I think Annie, you were next.
Hi. Annie Cameron Pickering Street. I'm the current co-chair of the Manchester Memorial School Building Committee, former school committee, and the High School Building Committee, and part of the regionalization committee. First, I wanted to say that I'm really happy to be here, because I've asked you to support buildings in Manchester, and now we're asking you to support our own building here in Essex. The Memorial School Building Committee met last week on April 30th, and we voted in support of the Essex Elementary School feasibility study. I think that speaks volumes to the process and the people who will be serving, many of whom are going to be joining the next committee. I want to provide some context and history and talk a little bit about what you're voting for. The MSBA is a very prescriptive process, and the feasibility study is essentially a data gathering exercise that informs the recommendation the district makes to the SBA about what action to take, whether that be a renovation, a renovation addition, or a rebuild. Along with choosing an owner's project manager and an architect, we'll be gathering the following relevant data: specifics on the education program, an initial space summary, we'll document the existing conditions and design parameters, and we develop and evaluate alternatives. Throughout this time, we'll be holding public forums in Essex and Manchester to share what we've learned and to ask questions. It's a very iterative and robust process. As we begin the data gathering process, we come armed with the data that we've already gathered. As we began approaching the solutions to our elementary school facilities about 10 years ago, a small group of Essex and Manchester residents worked with the district to convene the elementary configuration task force. Among them were Essex residents Jim Haskell, Tim St. Laurent, Christine Woodman, Mike Gerhardt, Rebecca Jones, and Susan Colliello. That task force, after a careful study involving resident outreach and other research methods, recommended maintaining the K-12, or the K-5 schools in each town. The district also conducted a survey with more than 600 respondents, and the results were the same: maintain the K-5 schools in each town. In fact, at the time, 68% of residents, or respondents from both towns, opposed dividing the elementary schools to pre-K through two and three and five. These reports can be found on the district website. There's a lot of data there, please go and look at it. I share this information to address some of the questions that have come up in Manchester and through conversations that have arisen since then. When we developed the plan for Memorial and asked Essex to support that, we were asking for a specific educational experience for Manchester students, and there was an implied promise that the same was coming for Essex. That building is designed for a K-5 educational cohort, and all it is critical to that experience. The Essex feasibility study continues that work. It's the second phase of the elementary school process and the final phase of our facilities process. I also want to remind you that the MSBA requires we build a facility that serves our community for 50 years. 10 years ago, we had no idea that there would be shingle hill or MBTA zoning, so a lot can change in 10 years, and I think it's incumbent on us to think Essex is going to change. Are you telling me time? Change is coming, so I guess it's an exciting opportunity for all of us. I really want you to be enthusiastic in your yay so that Manchester hears it, because we have supported them and we want them to be enthusiastic about what is happening here. So vote yes really loud, okay?
I'm gonna go there first. What was the name again? I'm sorry.
Forrestav. Oh, there it is. Hello. I have two kids who go to school here. One is in fifth grade, she will go to middle school in Manchester next year, and I can't stress how important it is for Essex kids to develop their own identity as Essex kids who go to school in Essex. They will all eventually join the regional school district, they will go to middle school and high school in Manchester, and I've heard rhetoric about potentially just not rebuilding this building and sending them someplace else, and I think that's really a dangerous idea. As I said before, this is an incredibly special place, and Essex kids deserve to develop their own identity and their own sense of place. I think I can speak for most students and teachers when I say the building's in disrepair. If you've had to send your kids here in the early fall when they've had to cancel school because it's 1,000 degrees, it just can't sustain what we needed to do. My fear is that not supporting the feasibility study is kind of a nail in the coffin of ever really rebuilding this school and giving the kids and the teachers really what they deserve. So I hope you will support the feasibility study. So much work has gone into, you know, understanding this. This would be such a huge benefit to the town and I am firmly in favor of supporting the feasibility study.
Hello? Tess? Tess? Ben Butrick, 81B, Chote Street. I am also a member of the finance committee. There is a financial angle to this. The finance committee did approve unanimously in going through the articles to support the feasibility study. Just in reference to Mr. Neal, there is a cost-benefit analysis that needs to be done just in terms of financial planning. This study will give us the data that we actually need to be able to do that financial planning, so I would encourage everybody to support this. It is, you know, just doing back of the napkin. If you look at our debt schedule, you know, we can support because of the roll-down of our debt, we can support the added costs, but, you know, we can't rely on a back of the napkin. We need actual hard data. We don't know whether it can be cited here, if there's going to be issues around environmental impact, et cetera. So we need this information, so I ask everybody to support this. Thank you.
Hi. My name is Antonella Muniz, I live at 20 Harlow Street. I'm totally in support of this article. I just had a couple of questions, well, really one question. In the reconfiguration potentials, is there going to be in fact looking at not having an Essex Elementary and busing the kids over to Manchester Memorial considering their numbers are down and the school is giant? Or looking at maybe a K to two in Essex and busing the kids three to five to Manchester? Just wondering. Thank you.
Through Mr. Moderator. We've had this question a number of times and we just clarified it very clearly in our school committee meeting before this meeting tonight. Nothing is on the table and nothing is off the table at this point. We are moving forward with the feasibility process. All conversations will be brought forth at the right time. Right now, the first priority, especially with MSBA, is not to get ahead of ourselves but to get through especially this enrollment report, the look at the projected enrollment because that's going to give us more data to actually decide if it's worth having conversations like that when we're looking at what we have versus 10, 20, 50 years out the line. So that's really the first step here. Nothing's on the table, nothing's off the table.
Further discussion?
Mark Whitman, 8 Lufkin Street. Sorry, it's another Whitman, sorry. In my profession, I'm a certified project manager and facility manager, so I've dealt with a lot of projects of this size and scope. I can tell you a million and a half is not unreasonable for the scope of work that needs to be done. If a major system goes out, like a boiler, you're looking at least a half a million to a million dollars to replace it and that's not including whatever equipment you have to bring in temporarily, all the design that's going with it. My point being, you can't, the most costly repairs or construction to do are ones that aren't planned for properly. So doing this project is, no matter what happens with this building in the future, whether it's refurbished to use for a school, if it's used for a different purpose, if it's razed completely and becomes a park, whatever it might be, not spending the money now is spending three, four, or five times more down the road. I just completed a project that we started probably four years ago and I can tell you it cost double what we had planned for originally. So it's exponential. Going, you know, saying that it's, everything's fine now and it was fine 50 years ago or 60 years ago, it's not fine anymore. Energy costs alone with LEED certification will make a huge difference in operating expenses for the school. So it's not just a one-time thing, this is exponential in a lot of different directions. And, you know, I can't imagine, you know, when this school was built, again, I forget what it's, 50 or 60 years ago, if you looked at a building that was built 50 or 60 years before that, would you expect to still be in that same building at that time? And I can guarantee you not because the building was built. Thank you.
Ruth Perrin, 15 Lufkin Street. I'm before you this evening to say that I'm going to be voting for feasibility, I'm extremely excited about this. The feasibility study is important. 25 years ago, many of you in this room did not have a home as a high school. You may have went to Gloucester, you may have went to Hamilton. Our kids finally have a home. It's right here in Manchester and Essex. We are a great marriage. We formed a district 25 years ago, this is the final piece. First, it was forming the district and regionalizing, then it was building the middle high school, Memorial Elementary School, and now it's Essex Elementary. Whether that's a renovation of this beautiful building that does have solid bones and structure or new building off-site or maybe onsite, we don't know what that looks like, that's why this feasibility is so important. So for those of you in this room that know me, know that I'm the cheapest person in the entire town of Essex. I don't like to spend one penny more than I have to. So for me to be in support of this is telling you something. This is important for our town, for our community, and for our kids. So I want to hear you, like Annie Cameron said, as loud and as proud as you can be to vote in favor of this article.
All those in favor of Article 13, raise your card.
Yeah!
Unanimous. But before we get to the next seven articles or all zoning articles, I believe the planning board's going to present all seven. They're all two-thirds vote, it's not majority, it's a two-third vote on zoning. And I've asked the planning board to come up and just do a quick overview on like the whole setup of all seven so she doesn't have to review them all individually so we can probably move along better. So Lisa's going to present the planning board's approach here.
Is this on? Okay, now it is, all right. Thank you, Mr. Moderator, for the chance to provide a bit of an overview of the seven zoning bylaw articles that the planning board has on tonight's warrant. Before I get to the articles, I have a few comments on the overall bylaw update effort. Our work with the Metropolitan Area Planning Commission has wrapped up and the materials that they have produced for the town are mostly available on their website and we're working to provide links to all the materials on the planning board's page on the town website shortly. Also, the town has recently hired a new part-time planner who has been helping us with the transition after the MAPC grant with language and updates for the bylaw. Valerie Massard is a full-time professional planner with the town of Kingston and she's already helped out a lot with the bylaw updates and we're looking forward to continuing work with her in the coming months. She is over there on the sidelines there. Thanks for coming, Val. So the planning board held a public hearing on April 17th at Town Hall as required by state law. After the public hearing was closed, the planning board members all voted on whether to support each of the seven articles that I'll be presenting this evening. And each of the seven articles on the warrant was unanimously supported by the members to be recommended to town meeting for approval. Then regarding the articles before you this evening, the first is a dimensional adjustment in the downtown district, which I'm actually going to address when I present that motion as it's not directly related to the bylaw update efforts. The other six articles are all new material for our zoning bylaw, all intended to provide more clarity and guidance to both applicants and to the regulatory personnel and boards as well as to implement better protections for town residents and businesses in town. Before I address these, I'd like to provide some context around the idea of strengthening the bylaw. Sometimes I hear people say, I like Essex the way it is, don't change it, and we don't need more rules. But adding more detail to the bylaw isn't an effort to change anything, it's an effort to protect the small-town character that most of us appreciate and cherish. Change can happen and if you don't want things to change, you do need to protect them and the bylaw can help us with that. We're on the North Shore of Metropolitan Boston, the pressure on undeveloped land is real and showing up in all the communities around us. We're only protected by lack of available sewage capacity and soils that make onsite systems difficult to establish. But if and when any of that changes, we'll be even more vulnerable to land pressures. So strengthening our zoning bylaws is our best recourse to help protect the small-town feel that Essex residents time and again tell us is what they like best about town. Please also remember that even though there are sometimes misperceptions that changes are targeting businesses, consider that our existing businesses are also served by additional protections specifically around permitting new developments that's in keeping with our town's character, whether residential or commercial. If you own a restaurant, you'd probably appreciate that a proposed composting facility would need to get a special permit to operate, which would help minimize any effects on both residents and businesses. So in Article 15, which is the first of the six articles with proposed addition to the bylaw, we ask to update the purpose and tenet of the bylaw, which is right at the beginning. Adding this language helps to articulate the purpose of the bylaw, which is primarily to ensure the health, safety, and welfare of residents. In order to achieve this, it's helpful to spell out the qualities that we value in town, which are the new items listed in the article. This language will help both applicants and the planning board in reviewing permits for new projects as well as to provide additional defense should any decisions be challenged. Article 16 clarifies that uses which are not specifically listed in the bylaw are therefore not permitted. It's a bit of stating the obvious, however, it's important for clarity in a bylaw to be very specific about what is and what is not allowed under that bylaw. Then the four final articles, 17 through 20, all have to do with a category of uses that require a special permit. This category is reserved for property uses that potentially could be incompatible with surrounding properties, so the purpose of requiring a special permit is to mitigate and manage those effects. This is a category of uses that is somewhere between those permitted by right and those are not permitted at all. Currently, our bylaw lists 13 uses which are found in the body of Article 17 and they're in there simply because they're getting renumbered as part of Article 17. Quoting Mass General Laws, Chapter 40A, which covers zoning and Section 9 on special permits. "Zoning bylaws shall provide for specific types of uses which will only be permitted upon the issuance of a special permit. Special permits may be issued only for uses which are in harmony with the general purpose and intent of the bylaw and shall be subject to general or specific provisions set forth therein, and such permits may also impose conditions, safeguards, and limitations on time or use." So for a use or a project to be granted a special permit, additional steps are necessary beyond those for a use that is permitted by right. The planning board is required to hold a public hearing, excuse me, and if butters of the property are notified of the proposed use and of the hearing. The hearing is also advertised in a paper in advance. Public comment at the hearing is welcomed and encouraged and may be used to help guide the written decision for a special permit, which must also be recorded with the property deed at the registry of deeds. In writing a decision for a special permit, the planning board is allowed to consider a whole range of both effects and restrictions or limitations that could be applied under that decision. There is more leeway for the board to impose limitations in order to protect surrounding areas up to and including denying an application. However, a denial would need to be based on demonstrable and specific harm or disruption that could result from the proposed use. Then on the four articles all relating to special permits, I'll clarify and answer questions after the motion for each, but we'll give a quick overview. Please note that none of the existing special permit uses or any new ones proposed are specific to any areas and a special permit is required for any location in town. Article 17 asks to create a new section of general provisions for all uses requiring a special permit, which is an effort to, again, provide guidelines and clarity for both the applicants and the planning board as well as interested residents. These provisions alert applicants about the information the board will want to review and the criteria that they will be expected to meet. Similarly, the board will have guidelines to use in both evaluating a proposal and writing the decision for the special permit. Note that the list of evaluation and decision criteria may not necessarily all apply to every use that might be covered under special permits, but including these alerts an applicant that they might be and also reminds the planning board about the scope of project features that they should be considering. Since our bylaw currently includes several use types without any detailed requirements, this new language would help to guide the process for these as well as those suggested under Article 20. This article also renumbers the original 13 special permit categories that are already in our bylaw and which, except for Article 18, do not have any changes proposed. Article 18 proposes a revision to our current cell tower bylaw, which is already a category in the special permit section. However, the current language is prepared, sorry, I've been talking too long, you know that. However, the current language was prepared over 30 years ago and technology has changed so much since then. The new language that is added is intended to provide more clarity and guidance for both an applicant and the board to help guide the special permit process. For this particular use, which is quite technical, the added language helps both the applicant and the board understand the features that warrant careful planning and scrutiny. As for any special permit category, it is essential to define the features and qualities of a project that are going to be assessed as part of the permitting process. When I read the motion for this article, I will highlight the few minor dimensional changes that are included. Article 19 proposes including adult entertainment as a new use requiring a special permit and details the criteria that an applicant would need to meet in order to develop such a use. Use details limitations on citing and location and other features, from signs and parking to displays and lighting, all tailored to minimize the effects of this use type on the surrounding area. And finally, Article 20 asks to add eight more use types to the list of uses requiring a special permit. Since these uses are all either less technical or potentially less troublesome than either of those two in the preceding articles, it is considered that the general provisions proposed in Article 17 would suffice to guide the special permit process for those uses. I'm done. That's it. So I'll start with Article 14.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move to amend Section 6-3.3.3.7 of the town zoning bylaws, dimensional and density regulations, to require that all buildings have a minimum front yard setback of seven feet as shown in Article 14 of the annual town meeting warrant with the following minor change. That the reference to minimum front yard requirement in Note 1 be amended from zero feet to seven feet, a typographical area, in keeping with the intent of the article.
Second? Discussion?
The reason that we're bringing this change tonight is that the original, and you can see in the warrant, the table has the zero to 25 crossed out and seven to 25 added in, was to allow for existing uses that are already, essentially don't have a setback. So this is all in the downtown district, this is not with throughout town, this is just, Section 6-3.3.3 is the Essex downtown zoning district, so it's just a small area that's mostly Main Street. The change from seven, from zero to 25 to seven to 25 covers new construction or a change of use such that a new building wouldn't be positioned with a zero-foot setback. So we're changing the zero to 25 to seven to 25 and properties that do have something less than seven would be grandfathered in if they continue the existing use and have the same building or rebuild there.
Any further discussion?
Edward Neal, 15 Western, again. I hope that you would all join me in voting against all of these zoning amendments. For those of you that don't know me, I've lived in town for 52 years. I've run an auto repair business mostly specializing in transmissions next to my house. I served on the fire department for 10 years, I was an EMT for six years, and because I worked next to my house, I was available during the day when there were not many EMTs to respond and I made almost every call. I served for three years on the Board of Selectmen, I served for three years on the Board of Health, and three years on the school committee. I have a broad understanding of the town. The town lived peaceably and profitably all these years under the bylaws that existed up until three years ago and there had been business sprinkled throughout town throughout that time. These articles are only about limiting the These articles are only about limiting the beginning of new businesses or the expansion of existing ones. And the premise is that they're trying to protect us. Our property values are very high, never been higher, and we're under the zoning with this business sprinkled throughout town. The existential threat that we face is unrestrained residential zoning that's being jammed at us from the state level. MAPC, that worked on these articles, handmaiden of the state legislature, that wants the MBTA zoning to put lots of housing in our communities. We already have determined that it's difficult for this town to afford our school system. And by diminishing the ability to run a business or start a business in this town, we're hamstring ourselves, we are cutting our own throats. There's one, this is overregulation, and I'll read you one paragraph that says it all, besides the fact that, I don't know if you're aware, but for the last three, almost four years, there's been a self-imposed moratorium on any new businesses in Essex. This Article 16, it says limitations on permitted uses. Well, she got to speak about all of them, I'm only going to talk once, Jeff, please, give me a little scope.
I'll give you a little leeway, you've got two minutes.
Okay, I'm gonna be on down to one. 641.3, Article 16, limitations on permitted uses. Unless listed in this section, 6.4, in its entirety, meaning the whole zoning bylaw section, including permitted uses and special permit uses, or exempt under Mass General Law, other uses are permitted. No building or other structure shall be erected, and no building, structure, or land shall be used for any purpose or in any manner other than as regulated and as permitted and as set forth herein for each district. You won't be able to park a truck on your property, and look, you go to the planning board and ask them, and they've instituted a whole section, a new definition of why we have these planning board zoning rules, that basically gives broad discretion for any purpose, including global warming, to deny. I say deny this. Thank you.
Any further discussion on Article 14? Ain't none. All those in favor of Article 14, raise your card. This is two-thirds, by the way. All those opposed? Motion passes by two-thirds. Article 15.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move to amend Section 6-1.3 of the town zoning bylaws, purpose and intent, by adding more detailed information concerning purposes and intent to be furthered by the town's zoning bylaws, as shown in Article 15 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
There's a second? Discussion?
I did touch on this in my introductory remarks, so I'm not going to belabor it now, but, and I'm happy to answer any questions. The purpose and intent that we currently have is one sentence that just talks about health, safety, and welfare, and the new language that we're looking to add includes 11 categories that talk about exactly the qualities of Essex that we're trying to preserve.
Further discussion?
This is on, there we go. I'm Tom Daniel, resident of Pond Street, and I just want to speak in support of this article and the others. I really want to applaud the planning board for the thoughtful and diligence that's gone into this over many years. One of the things, I participated in some of the meetings and workshops, and one of the things I enjoyed was meeting other residents that I hadn't had the opportunity to meet. And at a couple of them, I remember, this goes back to a comment you said earlier, Lisa, that they said, "Well, we're a small town, why do we need this zoning?" And one person in particular said, you know, "I like where I live, you know, I've lived here a really long time, my house is worth a crazy amount of money, and, you know, someone could come in and buy the house next to me for $700,000, and then the next house over there could turn into some sort of business that's not regulated, and we need, we just need to make sure that doesn't happen." And I turned and said, "That's what this is all about." And I think the intent in this article makes it super clear. I applaud the intentionality so that everybody understands what these articles are about, and that the other articles, if I can just speak very quickly to that, are doing the same thing, to preserve the character that we have, to provide clarity to folks that want to invest either in, you know, a new business or in housing, as well as for the folks that live here, so that they can be aware and informed about things that are going on. So thank you very much for all the work you've done.
Further discussion? Again, this is two-thirds, I'll keep saying it every time. So all those in favor of Article 15, raise your card. All those opposed? The article passes by two-thirds. Article 16.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move to amend the town zoning bylaws by adding a new section, 6-4.1.3, limitations on permitted uses, as shown in Article 16 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
There's a second? Discussion?
As I said in my introduction, this article puts limitations on permitted uses and says that if uses are not permitted in the bylaw, then they are not allowed in town. If you look at our bylaw, we have, between permitted uses and special permit uses, we have virtually everything covered. We have a business category, we have industrial A, we have industrial B, we have single-family and two-family, all by right, and then we also have other uses in special permit categories, including multifamily uses and three-family uses. So our bylaw is pretty comprehensive, and in fact, this article was prompted by our new town planner, Val, who suggested that this is sort of closing a loophole and making it clear that it's permitted or not permitted. So it really is, we're not disallowing anything new here, we're just saying if it's not explicitly stated as permitted, then by default, it is not permitted.
Any further discussion?
Carl Shawwell, 29 Belcher Street. What are the districts?
I'm sorry?
What are the districts?
What districts do we have?
This is everywhere. We have, in town, we have four districts right now.
16, Section B. "No building or other structure shall be erected, and no building, structure, or land shall be used for any purpose in any manner other than regulated and as permitted, as set forth herein for each district."
Correct.
What is the district?
We have four districts in town right now. We have two small residential zoning districts at Canoma Point, and these are all in the bylaw. We have the downtown district that allows mixed use by right, mixed use on a property by right, and has some smaller dimensional standards because of what's downtown. And then at the last town meeting in November, we codified what is called the general use district, which is essentially 98% of town, where all the uses that were permitted in the bylaw without defining which district are still permitted. So the general use district allows residential, and single-family, two-family, business use, industrial A, industrial B, and then everything is listed as special permit category. So we do, everything is in a district now.
So for example, in a residential area like Belcher Street, you could run an industrial waste hauling operation?
The way things stand now, because even though you, it seems like a residential area, it's in the general use district, and any of those uses are permitted on a property that has the adequate land area for that use. The other caveat here, just worth mentioning, because I know the moratorium was brought up earlier, is that the moratorium that was voted three times by town meeting is for the conversion of residential or open space into business or industrial property. So it takes no restrictions on existing business property, no restrictions on existing industrial property, and those, construction on those projects can still continue, businesses continue on properties that are already established as business properties.
And they would need a special permit to operate?
I'm sorry?
They would need a special permit to operate.
For?
The business.
Not unless it's in the special permit category.
Okay, thank you.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 16, raise your card. All those opposed? Motion passes by two-thirds. Article 17.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move to amend Section 6-4.3 of the town zoning bylaw. I, Lisa O'Donnell, move to amend Section 6-4.3 of the town zoning bylaw, uses requiring special permit, by changing the title to special permit uses, by adding a new general provision section, and by renumbering all existing sections, as shown in Article 17 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
Second? Discussion?
Again, this is the first of four special permit articles, and what this one seeks to do is to include the general provisions that are found in the warrant. So what this does is provide a set of guidelines for both an applicant and for the planning board to use in evaluating an application for one of the uses that requires special permit. So this isn't anything that's been explicitly stated before. The planning board actually, through state regulation, has quite a lot of latitude about what they can expect and ask for in that process. So it's sort of making a fair and level playing field here by articulating what we're going to look at and what the applicant should expect to respond. So here we address things like authority, application procedures, fees, and the most important section is the evaluation and decision criteria, where we talk about general criteria, harmony and general purpose of the intent of the bylaw. We talk about infrastructure and services, because this is important so that we don't put demands on our town streets and uses that we can't meet. Environmental considerations, and then fiscal considerations, to the extent that the planning board may use that, if there's a benefit to the town, as part of the decision process for a special permit. And then conditions, this is sort of a catch-all to other safeguards that the planning board may see necessary. And then rules and regulations just refers to another set of how-to documents, so it's not part of the bylaw, but it just talks about the process of applying for a special permit and the deadlines and the steps that are taken, so. This language would be applicable to each and every use that requires a special permit, and it's sort of all captured here in general provision so that it's just repeated once.
Any further discussion?
Oh, no.
Want us to go to Mike?
Which study? We did a lot of studies. Yeah, in working with MAPC, as part of that process, they have talked about how this helps strengthen the bylaw, and the more special permit uses that we capture, the more flexibility that we have, but the also better protections that we provide in that process. So the special permit process is really intended to just address uses that could potentially be problematic, and make sure that they're implemented in a way that is compatible with the surrounding town.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 17, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes by two-thirds. Article 18.
I, Lisa O'Donnell, move to amend Section 6-4.3.5 of the town zoning bylaws, radio, telecommunications, cellular, and television facilities, including renumbering, all as shown in Article 18 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant, with the following four minor changes. First, that the acronym RFR, which is defined in the definition section of the proposed bylaw section, and which is spelled out as radio frequency radiation, be spelled out in Section 6-4.3.2.5.3a2d, with the acronym to be enclosed in parentheses in a fashion identical to how the term radio frequency interference, RFI, is displayed in the preceding Second, that the reference in subparaphrase 6-4.3.2.5.3a1b to subparaphrase 6-5.3.2.5.3a1a be changed to 6-4. So the change is from six to four, I'm sorry, from five to four. So change to 6-4.3.2.5.3.3a1a, and that the word "this" which immediately precedes or said reference be stricken. Third, that in Section 6-4.3.2.5.3a5, the written word "20" be changed to "50" to match the number 150 that follows in parentheses. And fourth, that in Section 6-4.3.2.5.3b1, the number 10 in digits, that is, in parentheses after the written word "20," be changed to the number 20 in digits to match the written word.
There's a second? Perfectly, sir, perfect.
So this is a cell tower bylaw that, it's been reworked and refined, and we have been looking at it for a couple of years now, and we have reorganized it, and in general, the requirements that are in the old bylaw that is getting stricken remain. So all the dimensional requirements that are in there remain, with the exception that instead of being 150 feet, I'm sorry, 500 feet from a residence, it's now 600 feet, and we have added the provision that a cell tower be 1,000 feet from schools and similar daycare facilities. But outside of that, the height, the other dimensional requirements in the bylaw remain the same as the one that we have now. Because the technology has changed so much, and it's a much more complicated process to both understand and to design, install, and to permit, and to understand this whole process, again, the reason for the added language is to make it clear to the applicant and to the planning board and any other authority that gets involved, the criteria that would be used in evaluating a cell tower proposal. To that end, the language details things that are going to be considered, because if you don't put it in the bylaw, then you're going, you don't have the same recourse to actually talk about those things. So it's easier to put, again, like I said, with all of these, to make sort of a level playing field so that everyone knows what the expectations are. So I see their questions, we'll...
Further discussion?
Is this on? Okay, good. Rob Fitzgibbon, 18 Main Street. I was, members of certain boards assured me that the possibility of my encountering grievous bodily harm tonight was directly proportional to the amount of pushback I gave on this article. So I'm not pushing back, this is just a gentle nudge. Everyone turn your, if you look at page 17, Section 6 of your hymn book, I have just some questions specifically on with posses or cell towers, unreasonably interfere, scenic views, and ridgelines. And the first thing I would say is that a cell tower should be sighted on ridgelines, because that's, obviously you put a cell tower in the valley, it can't get coverage because it's in a valley, you gotta put it on, I gotta high up. Second of all, the unreasonably interfere, I mean, is there a reasonable interferedness? And then the last thing I'd like, you know, talks about scenic views. I mean, this is Essex, all of our views are scenic, right? Anyway, so I just wanted to ask of the planning board, someone could get up and speak to, like, how do they plan to apply this? My concern is that this particular section is way too onerous, and could, like, it's so open-ended, you could basically deny any and all applications. Thank you.
So I'm not entirely clear on what the question is, do I need to answer, or am I just... Or am I just... I know there's a lot here to it, so...
Please.
Lisa, so, and members of the board, my point is that this is so open-ended, I don't know how you would use the, for example, the additional subsections, you know, on page 18. How would you use this particular section in approving or denying a cell tower?
Okay, yeah. So on criteria for a special permit use such as cell towers or really any special permit use, the special permit granting authority, which is the Planning Board, who writes the decision, has a lot of a latitude under state guidelines to be able to put reasonable demands on a project. So that interpretation of reasonable demands is part of the process of actually developing the special permit and understanding the requirement. And it's a bit of a negotiate... it can be a bit of a negotiation sometime. The reason for putting some of these, albeit vague things, in here are so that it's clear that we are going to look at, whether it's scenic impacts or other things like that, so that the applicant knows that that's going to be part of the consideration of writing a special permit like this. If we don't put it in here, then it's much harder to actually impose any of those limitations. The other thing to consider in the whole special permit process is that any decisions that we put into a special permit decision need to be reasonably defensible, so we can't put undue and unnecessary and undefensible requirements on an application. It has to be reasonable. So that's... it... There's not sort of a black and white. It's not like a table of dimensions or something like that. The special permit category allows for that additional level of flexibility. It's part of having a public hearing process, allowing residents to have some input into the process and make their opinions heard, which isn't something that happens when you're just issuing a building permit. Building permit, you have a code, you check the boxes, it's a yes or a no. There's a lot more gray areas in these special permit categories, which is why they're special permit categories, because it's understood that they're complicated and tricky uses sometimes, so that there needs to be a public dialogue about how the town's going to regulate them and coming to sort of a mutual understanding with the applicant about what's appropriate for our town and what's going to be suitable for the applicant. Does that help?
Further discussion over here, Wes?
Hello? Okay, good, that one's working. Wesley Burnham, 22 County Road. I'm a former Planning Board member. I was first elected in 1985. I just got off a couple of years ago to a song musician with the DPW. This particular article has been tossed around for the last three, four, or five years. Shelley and I don't see eye to eye on it, and still don't. But my issue with this is not so much the regulation of it, but this particular article starts on page 10 in your book, and it doesn't end until page 26. And a lot of the stuff that is built in there is the FCC's licensing, their purview, not ours. And the Telecommunications Act of 1996 spells out certain things that we are not allowed to tread on. And a lot of them are in here. I'm not going to get into the specifics. I stepped back and stayed away from the Planning Board through most of this process, but there's a few things that I have got to point out. If you look on page 16, the preferred location indicates town-owned land outside of the residential area. Well, first off, I don't know exactly where the residential area. I've only been here for, I don't know, 70 years. Same with the industrial area, same with the commercial areas. We don't have those listed out yet, but that's a requirement in the preferred location that they have to document and prove that they've eliminated all of those before they can even apply. Going along with Rob earlier, the scenic beauty. I'm not sure how you measure scenic beauty. That's a little bit on the personal side. And it'll be very difficult if we get back over to deny it. I deny it because I don't like the looks of it. Well, that isn't exactly what one would call clear and defensible reasons. At this point in time, it's getting better. It started off at like 18 or 19 pages the first time. It's down to about 12. And I'm going to ask if we turn this down, send it back, and stick with what we've got now that has worked pretty well since the late 90s when we first wrote it. That's all I got. Thank you.
Can I go up there?
Guy Bradford, 22 Main Street. I have a question first and then an observation. The question is, would passage of this article have any effect on permits that have already been issued?
Have any effect on what? I'm sorry?
Permits that have already been issued.
No, no.
So the fact that we've approved a cell tower, for example...
Correct.
There's... this would not call any reconsideration of that?
Absolutely not, no.
Nor in any...
In general, it's safe to say that any permitted uses that are... have been permitted now...
Right.
They're already done, so...
Right.
The... any new bylaw language that gets adopted takes effect from the time that it was publicly advertised. So the whole permit was for the cell tower that was done, is that's already come and gone, and it's still...
And so maybe a question for counsel. Could, if this article were passed, could it have an effect on the current issue about the cell tower that's in litigation? Could this be used in some way so as to argue that reconsideration of the permit that's already been issued?
Sorry. Hi, through your Mr. Moderator here. I can't comment on pending litigation.
Yeah, okay. All right. Then...
Question?
Yeah.
Go ahead.
My observation is, I would ask that we not approve this. I'm looking at page 11, which are a list of the... the goals, I take it, of this article, which are so subjective and so open to question. I don't see... I agree with Wes and Rob. I don't see you could... how you could possibly use this regulation as it's written to help determine what should be and should not be issued a special permit.
Further discussion back here?
Hi, Brett Prince, 7 Essex Reach Road. I think it's crucial that we pass this tonight. For years, we've been talking about how complicated it is, and we've been leaving ourselves open to the permits that have now been authorized for a tower. And we continue to leave ourselves open. This is complicated. This is telecommunications. When companies come in and want permits, they bring teams of lawyers, and those lawyers expect to see something very... they expect to see specifics, and they expect to see... they... a bylaw that's going to make it clear what they can and can't do, and it's going to set some rules where we can protect ourselves. And we lack that. Waiting 25 and 30 years makes no sense. There's been years of effort that's gone into this writing, and it's complicated, so it's a lot of pages. And the team that's been working on it has been working on it for a long time to refine and improve. We've got it there. It's time for us to protect ourselves and vote for this tonight.
Further discussion?
Carl Shatwell, 29 Beltray Street. While we're discussing scenic obstructions, why is there... Can we amend this to include windmills? We've left windmills out of our zoning conversation.
I would have to rule that out of scope because it's not in the warrant.
Huh?
It would be outside of scope, so we could not amend this.
We're talking about zoning, correct?
Yeah, but the particular article is not pertaining... it's only pertaining to towers, not anything else like wind towers.
Where's the article on windmills?
Not here, that's why I can't do anything with it.
Well, I'd suggest our Planning Board get on it.
Okay. Discussion back here?
Hi, Tom DeMayo, Water Street. Just a quick comment. I think the town would be really well-served by supporting and promoting wireless communication in the town. I think it's a big win for the town for very low cost, and if anything, is going to improve the scenic... the scenic views in the town. And the second thing is, I have a question on some of the increases in some of the tolerance levels. It seems weirdly specific to ask to change the distance from one of the larger towers from 500 feet to 600 feet. That sounds odd. Can someone give me a justification for that?
The 500 to 600 feet from a house? Sorry, yeah.
Hi, I'm Shelley Bradbury, also on the Planning Board. Most of the towns in Massachusetts, they have districts. They have business districts, they have industrial districts, and they have allowed uses and non-allowed uses. So most of those distances are 200 to 300 feet. We're one of the few towns that don't really have a lot of protections with our in-the-residential area. And so when we had MAPC and we had the survey from the town, a lot of people were asking for more distance from the residential to the property lines. And so article... so towns that are like ours, usually the average is like 500 to 800 feet from a residential line. So we went in the middle of 600.
Any further discussion? All good? Okay, so, all those in favor of Article 18, raise your card. Those opposed? Motion passes by two-thirds. Article 19.
Aye. Lisa O'Donnell move that the town vote to amend Section 6-4.3 of the Town Zoning Bylaws relating to uses allowed by special permit, to add a new Section 6-4.3.2.14, adult entertainment uses as shown in Article 19 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
You have a second? Discussion? Please don't yell. If you want to move a question, come up to the speaker. Please.
Adult entertainment uses are protected under Chapter 40A of Mass General Laws as freedom... free speech. So the town, no municipality in Massachusetts, has the right to prohibit adult entertainment uses. So the next step is to require a special permit for adult entertainment uses, and that's simply what this article is proposing. Most of the communities around us have similar language, and we've proposed language here that just talks about, again, the same way we organized the cell tower bylaw, purpose and intent, why we're trying to regulate it, definitions and applicability, so that everyone's on the same page. Location and sighting for this particular use is obviously the most important thing. And then there are also regulations and standards around how it's advertised and how it presents on the street. Doing it... and then finally, there's other conditions, which just allows for provisions on site improvements. So the reason for doing it as unlikely as an adult entertainment use is to come to Essex is that if you don't have this in your bylaw, then you're vulnerable to a use that is allowed by right in the state regulations to come without any of these restrictions that we're proposing to put around that. So again, it's just providing those guardrails that will help us, if someone does come to town with this, review and potentially approve a special permit with language that would make it safe.
No further discussion. All those in favor of Article 19, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes by two-thirds. Article 20.
Aye. Lisa O'Donnell move that the town vote to amend Section 6-4.3 of the Town Zoning Bylaws relating to uses allowed by special permit, by adding the new uses that will be allowed by special permit as shown in Article 20 of the Annual Town Meeting Warrant.
You have a second? Discussion?
So in a lot of the outreach that we did as part of the MAPC project, and even recently just as the Planning Board, one of the questions has been, what uses do you feel the town is vulnerable to? And would you like to see regulated by special permit? So we got a lot more than the eight that are listed here. These were the eight uses that were most commonly checked. Yes, please regulate those uses. So we have commercial shooting ranges, commercial self-storage facilities, drive-through or drive-in establishments, event venue retreat center of function facilities, freestanding solar arrays, indoor or outdoor heavy equipment sales and storage, composting facility, and sporting venue. Again, what this article does is, it certainly isn't disallowing these uses, it's just putting an extra layer of protection around how they're implemented and working with an applicant to ensure that it minimizes effects such as we talked about with the general provisions on our infrastructure, on the quality of the neighborhood, things like that. So these uses could still be permitted in town. We would just go through the process of having a public hearing and getting input from residents about what the information... what the decision should reflect as far as sort of regulating these uses, so...
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 20, raise your card, please. Opposed? Motion passes by two-thirds. Article 21.
I, Nick Ellis, move that the town vote to revise the fee for purchase of small trash bags, 15 gallons, from $2.50 to $2. And the fee for purchase of a large trash bag, or 33 gallons, from $4.75 to $4, all to be incorporated in the Town's Pay As You Throw Solid Waste Disposal Program. Said fees to be effective for bags purchased for the period beginning July 1st, 2024.
You have a second? Discussion?
Let's talk about trash bags. So when we instituted the Pay As You Throw program last year, we had to make a number of assumptions related to how much garbage we'd be throwing away, how often we'd be hauling dumpsters away, and in doing so, come up with what we thought the overall cost of garbage disposal within the town of Essex would be. Turns out, we were pretty close, but a little high. And we meant to be conservative because we did not want to come up short and run into an issue with actually throwing our garbage away. Some numbers, really quick for the folks in the room. We threw about half as much garbage away per month since we went to the Pay As You Throw system, which I won't say was a goal of ours, but it certainly means that we're being a bit more... we're being a bit more conservative with what we chuck into the garbage bin. The other thing is, is our recycling volumes have also increased. Those volumes have increased a bit, but not by double, let's put it that way. So what that means is, we're removing garbage from the garbage dumpster. It's not winding up in the recycling. The savings that we're seeing is essentially related specifically to the fact that we're hauling less garbage. I can't remember the exact number, but it's $700 or $800 every time a truck shows up to haul a dumpster away. Instead of us doing that three times a week, we're doing it once a week now. So we're trying to pass that savings on to you.
Any further discussion? Although... oops, sorry, Ed. Although, oops, sorry, Ed.
Can you give us an idea, the differential in what it costs us to have the stuff hauled away in the dumpster that we have versus what is it for the cost of getting rid of the recycling?
So, the cost of the recycling is essentially borne by the cost of your sticker to get into, uh, the facility. So, the $150 sticker for, uh, full price, and then 75 for, um, senior citizens, uh, basically pays for recycling. Um, it is quite a bit less expensive than it is to haul away garbage. I don't know, have the number on the top of my head. Uh, I will say, the plan currently, and folks who have been to the transfer station lately have probably seen that we have, uh, a big concrete pad there with a couple of pieces of equipment on it. Those are compactors for our recycling. Um, so, that'll do two things. First of all, it'll make it so we haul less frequently for recycling. Uh, the other thing is, now our cardboard, instead of, uh, being out in the weather and getting wet, uh, will be covered and also compacted. Um, we pay by the pound to dispose of recycled cardboard, so the fact that it won't be out getting rained on should also save us some money. So, ultimately, we would hope that we'll be back here next year also talking about lowering the sticker price, but we can't do that just yet.
Any further discussion?
Mike Dyer, Indian Rock Lane. Um, I may have missed it, but, uh, in reading the article, it sounds like it intends to change transfer sticker fees to other amounts. Uh, is that part of this article or not?
No, that was, that was the art, the article, but the motion did not include that, just the bags.
Yeah, so the original article was written, um, before we had final numbers on everything, essentially, and it has been modified. Um, we are not changing the sticker price as part of this article, we are only changing the bag price.
Thank you.
Any further discussion? Name?
Natasha Taylor, 67 Apple Street. Um, is it something that you track, um, the amount of residents that left the dump system to private system?
Yeah, I mean, the only way that we can really track it is by the number of stickers that we sell.
Yeah.
Um, that said, people may buy stickers and only recycle. Um, people may buy stickers and only throw stuff in the garbage. Um, I believe our sticker sales were down about 100 from the average year, um, year over year this year. So, uh, there was a little bit of lost revenue there, but in the big scheme of things, uh, I believe we would do 1,100 in a normal year before, and we sold about 1,000 last year.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 21, raise your card. Any opposed? The motion passes. Article 22.
I, Jody Harris, move that Article 22 be indefinitely postponed.
You have a second? All those in favor of postponing Article 22, raise your card. Any opposed? Motion passes. Article 23.
I, Jody Harris, move the town transfer from the Town Technology Fund, the sum of $62,000 for the installation of wired and wireless devices at Centennial Grove to facilitate electronic communication and security monitoring at the Centennial Grove, including design, installation, configuration, purchase of equipment and supplies, upgrade of the video server at the police station as necessary, and anything incidental or related thereto.
Is there a second? Discussion? Discussion? All those in favor of Article 23, raise your card. And then those opposed? Motion passes. Article 24.
I, Ruth Arperine, move that the town appropriate or reserve from fiscal year 2025 Community Preservation Fund estimated annual revenues or other available funds, all as specified on the Community Preservation Act Town Meeting Handout. The amounts recommended by the Community Preservation Committee for open space reserve, historic resources reserve, community housing reserve, budgeted reserve, administrative expenses, and special projects or transfers.
You have a second? Discussion?
Pretty limited discussion. On the back of your, um, monetary summary, you'll see that there is only one project that was supported by the Community Preservation Committee. It's, um, it was presented by the Department of Public Works. It's to repair the tomb at Spring Street Cemetery, and the total amount of the ask was $3,500, which was supported by Community Preservation Committee.
No further discussion. All those in favor of Article 24, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. I'd like to reckon, he's, he's, because he's here, he just, he just strolled in, I'd like to recognize Senator Bruce Tar. Would you like to speak and say hi to us?
Thank you, Mr. Moderator, and through you to the members of town meeting. I know one of the things that is not good for a public official to do is stand in the way of the end of town meeting. So, thank you. I'm going to be just really brief. First of all, it's nice to see you all. Um, I just want to let you know, we're in the middle of debating the state budget for the coming fiscal year, and we're working very hard to be able to maintain investments in local aid as our priorities. And the House finished the debate, uh, in April, and they included a substantial increase, in my humble opinion, for Chapter 70, for the Manchester Essex Regional School District. I know that makes the superintendent very happy. We have finally been able to cross the line of going over $100 per pupil minimum aid, which is something that we've been fighting for, for a very long time. The House is at $104, that translates to about $117,000 for the school district. We're hoping to do even better than that in the Senate, and we're also hoping to maintain or increase unrestricted general government aid, which is the money that municipalities get that is basically unencumbered. You can spend it on any municipal need. So, we're making good progress. The revenue picture is still a little bit unsteady. We have been underperforming our benchmarks on which the budget is based up until April, but we got a surprise in April, and it appears that we are going to overperform our April numbers by almost $900 million. So, nobody has an answer as to why that volatility is happening, but we'll take the good news when we can get it. That being said, uh, we're going to debate the budget in May, and we'll be working to improve the numbers that I just relayed to you, all of the while thinking about the decisions that you have to make, and the fact that Essex is a very well-managed town, is working hard to put those public tax dollars to work for things that are important. That being said, thank you all very much, it's an honor to represent you in the Senate.
I, Ruth Arperine, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $14,602 for the purchase of automatic external defibrillators, AEDs, and anything incidental or related thereto.
You have a second? Discussion?
I would like to think that we don't need discussion to get AEDs for our police department, but since we're spending money, um, we have, the Essex Police Department currently has five AEDs. One of them is a 2023 that we received on grant. Four of them are a little bit older. Um, two of them are 2012 and, oh, I'm sorry, two of them are 12 years old and two of them are 20 years old. The 20-year-old AEDs are basically garbage. And the 2012s will be repurposed inside the building so that they can be used in other areas of the building. Um, the goal is to put new AEDs, and these generally have a 10-year shelf life, so we're long past due of needing these.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 25, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Article 26.
I, Ruth Arperine, move that the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $55,524 for the purchase of replacement tasers for the Essex Police Department and anything incidental or related thereto.
You have a second? Discussion?
So, our department's tasers is an opportunity to use a less lethal use of force, which is great, and, um, our existing tasers are over 10 years old. The tasers themselves have about a 10-year life expectancy, we've hit that, and we're already starting to have problems with some of them. I believe we have 10 in the department and two, six? To more people. So, we have six in the department now, we're looking for 10, but the ones that we do have are basically, they've met their life expectancy.
All those in favor of Article 26, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Article 27.
I, Nick Ellis, move that the town vote to transfer from Sewer Enterprise free cash the sum of $43,360, and from Water Enterprise free cash the sum of $43,361, for a total of $86,721, to purchase and equip a heavy-duty utility pickup truck with a crane for use in the water and wastewater departments and anything incidental or related thereto, and further, to authorize the Board of Selectmen to dispose of the truck that this new truck is replacing by sale or trade, and to effectuate the purposes of this vote.
You have a second? Discussion?
Ruth was talking about how a lot of that equipment is 10 years old and beyond its useful life, while our truck is the same. Um, this is a utility body pickup truck with a crane on the back that we use to pull broken sewer pumps out. Um, it responds when we have broken water mains, um, and it's old and getting to the point where it's not going to be terribly dependable, so, we're looking to replace it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of Article 27, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Article 28.
I, Jody Harris, move that Article 28 be indefinitely postponed.
You have a second? All those in favor of postponing Article 28, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Article 29.
I, Jody Harris, move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $60,000 to be used to replenish the Finance Committee's Reserve Fund for the remain, for the remainder of fiscal year 2024.
You have a second? Discussion? Uh, all those in favor of Article 29, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. Article 30.
I, Jody Harris, move the town vote to transfer from free cash the sum of $189 to pay a bill for my past fiscal year.
You have a second? This requires a four-fifths vote. So, all those in favor of Article 30, raise your card, please. All opposed? Unanimous. Article 31.
I, Ruth Arperine, move that we indefinitely postpone Article 31.
Is there a second? All those in favor of postponing Article 31, raise your card. Opposed? Motion passes. I will take a motion to adjourn. Have a good night.